Okay, good evening. It's 7:05 PM and I'm calling to order the Tuesday, February 23rd zoning board appeals meeting for town of Lakeville. And the first item is to read into the record the suspending provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the February 23rd, 2021 public meeting of the zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake cam. You don't need a Facebook account to view the meeting and the meeting will be recorded and available later on Lake Cam TV's website. So, having said that, our first agenda item is the Bauer hearing. And if I can just get this to open. For some reason, the computer isn't cooperating with me here. So Kathy, you're gonna love this. I'm gonna put you on the spot. Can you read the the notice for this hearing and I'll try to get my computer to react? You're unmuted Kathy.
Thanks.
The Lakeville zoning board of appeals acting in accordance with mass general laws, chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of James Bauer. A special permit under 6.3.2 and 7.4.6 is requested to relocate a pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure within the setback and to construct and place an additional 14 by 20 accessory structure within the setback as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is Four Pilgrim Road.
Okay, thank you for taking care of that Kathy. I think I'm back online here. We'll find out soon enough though. Okay, is uh who is presenting tonight for?
It's myself, Mr. Chairman. It's James Bauer.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bauer, why don't you try to be as informal as we can here with following certain protocols? We need to, but why don't you kind of give us the rundown as to what you're looking to do?
Great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and zoning board members. For the record, my name is James Bauer for Pilgrim Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Tonight, we are requesting a special permit to build a 14 by 20 foot shed on our current property. The plans provided for this project have been submitted and should be available to everyone tonight for review. The purpose of this special permit is going back, just to give you a little timeline here. We applied for a building permit for this shed back in October of 2020. Unfortunately, we didn't learn until mid-December that our property was classified as a non-conforming lot. We did not know this when we purchased the property in June of 2020, but with our conversations with Mr. Darling and based on his guidance and recommendations, we are here tonight to request a special permit for the shed project. When looking at the zoning criteria for this, there's two zoning sections that we do not currently meet. One of them being setback distances from two of our direct neighbors. We cannot meet all of their this criteria on the size of the structure. We're basically off by between eight and 14 feet. And then obviously, the second would be the 25% land coverage rule, which will be exceeded. So when we look at our lot size today, there's two numbers that pop up. There's a 7150 square foot number and then also a 6970 square foot number. I'm gonna use the smaller number just based on worst case, which when we factor in the 25% land coverage rule, basically allows us 1743 square feet to use on the property. So when I add up the house, I add up the current shed and I add up the screen porch that we have, we're basically at 24% of land coverage, which is 1690 square feet. So I have roughly 53 square feet left to conform to the 25% rule. The new shed that we plan to put on the property is 280 square feet. It puts us a little bit at 1970 square feet, which gets us now at 28%, which is about 3% over the allowable coverage. So our request is to have the zoning board agree for us to have an additional 227 square feet of non-livable space on the property.
Okay. So read a couple of memos into the record that we have received from other boards who commented on the on the petition. First one is from the Board of Health, dated February 12th, 2021. They actually has comments on a number of petitions, but I'll just speak to the one in front of us here. For the health, we have received a copy of the petition for hearing for Four Pilgrim Road. Board of Health Regulation 2.6 states, no structures like sonotubes, deck sheds, sheds, etc. Shall be within five feet of any component. The proposed location for the shed appears to be within three feet of the leaching pit. Also, none of the septic components are designed to be driven over with equipment, so please inform the homeowner to use caution if relocating sheds in the septic area, assuming means if we issue the permit in order to do that. So it looks like in addition to the impervious area, you're looking to have granted tonight. Looks like you also may be a little closer than you're supposed to be to the your septic. Are you aware of that memo?
Yes, yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. I actually spoke to Mr. Cullen yesterday about the two feet. In looking at the options for us, whether either to move the existing structure by two feet or to go for variance and based on his recommendations, we're perfectly fine with moving it two feet closer to the back edge of the property, which he believes should be fine. So that's our our goal is to move it and be done with the with that portion of the Board of Health.
Be willing to meet the regulation, make sure you're at least five feet from any of the components, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yep. The planning board memo dated February 18th, reading into the record, at the Thursday, January 28th, 2021 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board has no comments regarding this petition. Okay, so I guess what we're really looking at here is whether we should allow you to or grant the permit to exceed the 25% lot coverage.
Correct.
I know normally, my only comment will be normally, I think we try to stay away from from that particular issue, you know, on undersized lots, we tend to, you know, be a little more lenient towards setback issues and things of that nature, but I'll defer to my board to make comments and ask questions as well. So I'll kind of keep to my regular pad pattern here, although we don't have Chris Carmichael here for me to start off with. So I'll start with with you, Jeff, since I can see you smiling. Do you have any comments or questions for the?
I was just curious why he was saving that 10 by 11 shed. Is it that great of a shed or is it?
Well, it's a great question. So that shed was part of the property when we purchased it back in June. It's an older shed. It's it's a shed that basically is going to be used for lawn equipment and gasoline. It has a very strong. I'm sure it's had a lot of equipment over the years in it to use it for the storage spaces that we want to use. It's just it's going to be more for lawn equipment and things like that, not for what we're expecting. So it's still a usable structure and we still like to be able to use it for that. So.
I noticed you're just putting the new the new shed, you're just putting it up on, it's going to be frame construction on blocks and the corners?
That is correct.
There's no no foundation or anything in it?
There's no slab, no foundation. It'll be crushed stone with four by four timbers and then a full decking on that top of that.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Jeff, okay.
I was just wondering what he was using that for anyway, what's proposed use?
Yeah, so let me ask you this at the same time. I'm gonna piggyback on Jeff's question. Obviously, that's, you know, that keeping that shed there is adding to the, you know, the equation when you're talking about impervious coverage. And are you leaving it there out of convenience or is it or do you really need the shed there?
I'm sorry, you're talking about the old versus the new?
The old shed, yeah.
The old shed? Like I said, I think it's it's still a usable structure for lawn equipment and things like that. The new structure will be more for boat equipment, outdoor patio furniture, seasonal changes when we have unfortunately, the house does not have a lower floor, which is a basement, which we're used to. So our storage capacity has really, we have none compared to our previous home. So this additional shed will really utilize for boat equipment, you know, all the water skis and all the the outdoor patio seasonal and also fishing gear and stuff like that. So not having that clothing, seasonal change clothing and stuff in the other shed would, I think my wife and children would appreciate, you know, not smelling like gasoline and things like that. So we'd like to keep it. That's really the really maximize the amount of space that we have or it would be great.
I take it the structure, is it a is it plastic, the the old shed?
No, it's a it's timber. It's a natural timber. Yes, it is. Yep.
Okay.
It's two by four construction with with platform siding, asphalt roof.
Okay. You good, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm good.
Chris Sheedy, any comments?
Just, yep, just a quick question. Does the house have a basement or crawl space storage?
It does, Mr. Sheedy. It has a, it's roughly about five, five by eight foot crawl space, which is where our water filtration system is. It's a very small space. It's basically just the the hot water induction and the water system. That's about all that fits down there.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I have a question.
Jerry, go ahead, yeah.
In your drawing on the application, it says a six foot setback on the side of the property. It looks like the property line kind of comes in a little bit towards the front of the property. Is that setback six foot all the way down the back of that?
No, I believe the six foot is strictly for where the shed, that side of that shed would be located up against the neighbor neighboring property. So.
But is that six foot consistent all the way through the the backside of the shed?
Yes. Yeah, pretty much is. Yeah.
Okay. And what's your proposal to move the existing structure over to the new corner?
So there's a there's a shed company that actually they have this machine called the Mule. They actually transport it around the property, making sure that there's no travel across like a septic system in sensitive areas. So basically, they would take it across the front lawn and and relocate it into the back of the property. I'm not sure if you've ever seen the machine. It's actually a pretty neat little unit, but it's it's got big pneumatic wheels and it's designed strictly for moving large structures on property with minimal damage to to the to the property itself.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure it looks like a caterpillar style.
It is. I have I have pictures if anyone would like to see it, but it's pretty. It's a pretty neat little machine.
Okay.
A little mini fork truck, yeah.
I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Nora. Any questions?
I'm good at this time.
Chris Campbell?
I'm not sure if I missed you in the beginning, but did you have two numbers for calculating the lot size? You said you were taking the more conservative one? I was just curious about that. I've been getting this heard that.
Yeah. So if you look at the the plans I provided to you folks, in the little blue section, it says map 40, 60, whatever it was, it shows 7150 square feet on that. And that's, I believe, the the map that's with the town. But when I look at the purchase and sales agreement that we signed in June of the of last year to buy the house, the number came in at a little bit lower than that, came in at 6970 square feet. So I'm using the lower number based on the calculations tonight. I mean, I'd love to go with the bigger number, but I'm not sure what your records show there today, if it's 7150 or 6970. I believe you may say 5970. So if I could go with the 7150, it would gain me, you know, 100 and some 180 square feet, which gets me a little bit closer to the 25%. Going with the lower number, it puts us at 28%, which is 3% over town ordinance.
Thank you.
Watch this. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Carmichael. How are you? So if you have any questions or comments, I'm not going to have you vote on this one, but.
Use myself because I didn't hear the beginning of the
Well, I mean, if you had a question, you have you have the opportunity.
Nope, you guys are quite capable. Continue, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I mean, I guess really what it's coming, oh, let me, let me, let me not jump ahead here. Do we have any neighbors or butters or anyone else at the the meeting or on the meeting, I guess I should say, that that has any questions or wants to speak for or against the petitioner? Or the petition? And 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 keep in mind, one of the reasons that we, I mean, obviously, we're obligated to ask for input from the from from the attendees, but one of the reasons that we do ask is, you know, a lot of times our decisions, you know, there is a component to it as to how it's going to affect the, you know, the neighborhood and what the, you know, your your butters think. So if no one is speaking against it or it's not gonna, you know, ruin the character of the neighborhood and whatnot, that's obviously a benefit to you. So Lake Cam, do we have anybody on Facebook who has questions or?
No comments on Facebook.
Okay. Okay, so I guess it's coming down to whether we want to grant the relief or the, it sounds like about an extra 3% worth of worth of lot coverage. Again, I personally, I'll speak for myself. I, you know, I'm I'm always a little little more hesitant on on these types of of requests, just because normally it's it's just personal preference for the property owner, but you know, it doesn't appear that it's it's really out of character from what I know about the neighborhood. I mean, I think, you know, there's a lot of a lot of properties down there that over the course of time prior to zoning and whatnot are probably covering a little more than they're they're supposed to, the 25%. And it's, you know, it's this, you've agreed that you're gonna comply with the regulation from the Board of Health standpoint, be more, be five feet away from where they want you away from. So I personally don't see an issue, but I'm one of five. So I will I'll leave it up to my other board fellow board members here to see if anybody would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think it's Jeff, Jerry. There you go, Jerry. It went down to the bottom of my little Hollywood squares thing here. So.
Shut the fence, Mr. Chairman.
All right, ahead. Fortunately, I'm getting used to everyone's voice. So I'm go ahead and tee it up.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for the new structure, but exclude the existing structure from the special permit.
So what are you trying to accomplish to get to? He can't keep the old shed?
Do not keep the old shed, but.
Okay, so well, Amy, help me out here. And I wasn't necessarily thinking we need you right this early on, but do we want to motion or 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 deal with the specific structures or should we be dealing with the percentage of lot coverage if everything else is in compliance with the, you know, with zoning bylaws?
So I I think that Mr. That's what Mr. Noble is doing. So if the and correct me if I'm wrong, because I I'm not really following the percentages, but if the if the new structure is allowed and the and the existing structure is removed, I think that we're still at 25 or under, correct?
Yeah, I guess my point is, if Jerry, I don't mean to cut you. I guess I am gonna cut. I don't mean to cut you off. I'm gonna do it. But like, I'm thinking if if we're looking to say, listen, get rid of the old one and we'll grant you the new one, he really doesn't need to be here for that. Because at that point, he's in compliance with the 25% anyways.
So, so correct. You are. You know what? You are. You're right. So the motion would be to deny the variance for
Right.
over the over 25%. And I think, but I think the motion can include that. So the motion can include to, you know what? It doesn't have to. You're right.
Yeah, that my 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 see it, Chris, give me one second. I my concern is is that if we start getting into, and that's why I brought up the question of shed A versus shed B. I think we stick to the to the numbers and then it doesn't doesn't matter, you know, we'll do, you know, what if he says, I'm gonna build a brand new shed. It's twice as big, then it's, you know.
You are right.
I think we go that route. So so basically, Jerry, what you're proposing is to deny the petition.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we hang on, Chris? I'm gonna get to in a second, Carmichael, but we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second? We don't have a second. We can move on to Chris's question. All right, I don't see a second. So the that that motion is not going anywhere. Mr. Carmichael, thought you weren't gonna speak up. I knew this. I knew I knew that wasn't gonna happen.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. On the agenda, it lists that the 14 by 20 accessory structure will be within the setback, so you will need a variance. You follow me?
I'm following you.
So that's for the special permit. But but for the, but if he keeps both, he needs a variance from the lot coverage. So the application is is a bit confusing because it says special permit slash variance. So the at this point, the 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 board can deny the variance and then approve a special permit to allow that one structure within the setback. As long as that's clear. So he can, so we can deny the variance for over 25% and then we can approve a special permit to have a structure within the setback, provided that structure does not increase the coverage to over 25%.
Correct. Okay. So Kathy.
Hey, John, I have a quick question.
Let me just have Kathy chime in because she usually enlightens us pretty well on some.
I didn't. I didn't advertise for a variance.
Right. That's what I was just gonna say. This is only advertised as a special permit request, not a variance.
Correct.
And the variance is noted in the Bauer letter to the ZBA, but in the actual permit that was advertised, it's asking for a permit variance. I mean, a permit.
Special permit.
Special permit. Thanks. It's been a long day.
So Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the special permit would have covered the setback. But if he's not gonna need this special permit for the lot coverage, we could give him a variance for building a new structure within a setback. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Amy.
No, so so you're right. We can. You can grant a special permit for putting a structure in the setback, but Nate cannot issue a building permit on that until he takes down, until he's at 25% lot coverage.
Correct.
Or unless or unless he goes for a variance, correct?
He can come back for a variance, but it sounds like he's not gonna, yeah.
All right. So I thank you, everyone, for the clarification. So can you give me one second, him, Mr. Bauer? I know you it looks like you'd like to make a comment, but is anyone interested in making a motion to allow for the over 25% lot coverage? And then there's a reason I'm.
So moved.
You'd like to, you would, you would want to grant the variance for over 25% lot coverage.
No, no, not the variance. What I'm recommending is that we approve the permit.
The special permit to be within the setback.
To be within the setback.
Keep the new shed, get rid of the old shed, so to speak. Again, we're not getting into particulars, but.
Well, wouldn't that then, John, be discussing the variance percentage and we're just talking about the setback and to construct an additional 14 by 20 accessory structure?
So so your motion should be to allow the 14 by 20 accessory structure within the setback, provided that the 25% lot coverage is not exceeded.
So moved.
Could we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now tell me if I'm going too far with for lack of a better term, advice. I haven't always been accused of giving the best, but Mr. Bauer, because I think if we go ahead and and vote on this and it passes, as as Amy has, Chris pointed out, and Amy's clarified, you'd be able to put the shed up, but you'd have to figure out whether you downsize that shed or get rid of the other shed or whatever the case may be. Or you would have to turn around and come back and you know, ask for a a variance for going over the 25% lot coverage. Now, I don't know what, you know, new information you would bring or how that would would end up, and I don't want to speculate on it, but I mean, at this point, I think you've seen the the inclination of the board. So and I only point that out because you, you know, you can say yes to this and go forward. You could turn around and again, Amy, stop me if I'm going too far. You could turn around and ask us to, I don't know if he can, you know, continue it or withdraw without prejudice or whatever the case may be. So you have some options to kind of stop this at this point. Again, you could go forward, get that get the relief from the setback and, you know, and come back completely on a separate hearing for the variance. So you have some options and I just want to make sure you realize that.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, if we can just kind of I guess I'm confused as everything that we just talked about. If we can just kind of rehash it quickly. It's so what we're saying is the 14 by 20 foot shed can go in the location that's stated on the map plan, provided in the same location that we have it depicted, but we would have to remove the existing 10 by 12 foot shed that would be relocated in the back area by the septic system, correct?
Well, keep in mind that initially about making sure we don't specify certain structures is because in all reality, all you need to be concerned with is 25%. You could turn around and take a chunk house and leave that shed there as long as you could turn around and get rid of a deck, you could find something else on the property too. So you're just gonna be limited to the 25% maximum impervious coverage.
That's correct. So Nate could not issue a building permit for that 14 by 20, I think it is, shed unless and something else was reduced and it was 25% impervious. So it's, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So basically, what we're saying is there's there's no no added relief beyond the 25%. I need to stay within that and whatever size structure I can find that meets that criteria. I could put it up against the neighboring side of the property, which is gonna basically be outside of the setbacks, but we'd be okay with that.
Correct. Your review at this point, based on the motion that's on the table right now. Your, your, at this point, based on the motion that's on the table right now, is, would be to be with, you know, within the setback, um, no more than you currently are. Based, which has been, been established by the existing shed.
Okay. All right, so a, we, a screen in porch today is considered part of that 25% land covers rule? Is that, it's a non-livable space, but it's still classified as part of the square footage of the property?
Yeah, yeah, livability has nothing to do with what's considered impervious, so.
Okay.
It's, it all has to do with what can get into the ground.
Okay.
Basically water.
Very good, thank you for the clarification.
So, um, unless you would like to withdraw and, and, and reset or whatnot. And I honestly, I don't think there's any danger in going forward at this point anyways, because you can come back for the variance. Um, I, I'll, I'll call the, um, I'll call the vote.
Okay, so one last thing, Mr. Chairman, the, the variance gets me what, in the end?
The end, the variance, the variance is what you're going to need to get that 25% plus coverage. That's what's going to get you to be able to do exactly what you want. And again, I'm not telling you where it's going to end up, but I, you know, unfortunately, I, I think if you listen to the, the, the conversation here, and like I said, I pointed out, it's, it's, we very rarely, you know, give variances, um, for, you know, situations like this. Unfortunately for you, I, I know you didn't know what you were getting into when you, when you got the house, but unfortunately.
And that's the same board? I would come back to the same board to do the same process? Or is it a different group of people?
You've come to see us again.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. So if you, if, if, uh, unless you're going to ask for continuance or to withdraw, um, without prejudice, I, I will call the vote for, unless there's any other comments or questions from the, uh, the board members. Okay, no particular order, just the way you guys are on my screen. I am going to have, uh, Chris Campo, since he's second in line here, vote on this one as an associate, because Mr. Carmichael, uh, was not here for the entire hearing. So, um, yay or nay in, in favor of, um, granting the relief needed for the special permit? As, Nora, I think Nora, you made the, um, you made the motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Nora?
Yay.
Chris Campo?
In.
Krishidi? Oh, I'm sorry, hang on, not, not Krishidi, I get your, your associate, sorry. My, my apologies, Chris.
Me? Yay.
And Jerry?
Yay.
And I will vote in favor. Well, so the motion passes unanimously. Um, you know what the next steps are, Mr. Bauer, if you did decide to go for the variance. And I'll let Kathy explain the process now that the special permit has been approved.
Okay, the ZBA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks and it's submitted to the town clerk. There's a 20-day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it, it will be sent back to you. You take that decision to the registry of deeds to be recorded and then take the receipt to the building department.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thanks, folks. Have a good night.
You too. All right, Kathy, you're going to kill me. I, I think my, uh, computer is just going to keep acting up when it's time to read the, um, read the opening of each hearing into the record. So unless you guys want to wait three minutes for it to reboot. Kathy, would you mind, uh, opening the potato? Or I'm opening the potato, Gary, and could you please read, um, the notice?
So, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Stephen L. and Cheryl A. Fertado. A special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4 is requested to construct a 12-foot by 26-foot deck on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot within the setbacks as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 17 South Avenue and is owned by Stephen L. and Cheryl A. Fertado, S and C Fertado Family Trust.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, who is here on behalf of, uh, I guess the potatoes?
David. David Doyle.
Okay, David, uh, are you, uh, the contractor or?
I'm retired contractor, vocational instructor.
Okay.
I'm trying to, I'm acting on their behalf. They would like to build a deck on the front of the cottage. Uh, the lot is very narrow, so technically it will not conform to the town setbacks. It will not exceed the existing footprint as far as the width of the existing cottage. Uh, basically that's it.
So basically, the cottage is in the setback anyways, because it's such a small lot and they want
Yeah.
deck on it. How was the, uh, the coverage since, um, we just got finished talking about it with the prior one as far as the?
Coverage should not be a problem. The property is approximately 9,000 square feet. And the cottage itself is roughly, I believe, about maybe 500 square feet plus the deck. So they, they're not covering a lot, a lot of land. And the cottage is towards the front, near the water, with a lot of, uh, space in the rear of the structure.
Okay. Very good. Um, let's see what we have, the memos here from the other boards. Uh, okay, we have a Board of Health memo that I'm going to read the section pertaining to 17 South Ave. Into the record, uh, dated February 12th, 2021. Received a copy of the petition for hearing of 17 South Ave. The Board of Health requests a sketch that shows the location of the septic components in relation to the proposed deck prior to making any comment. Are you aware of the, um, that request, um?
No, I'm not. They just had a site, a tight tank put in, uh, a few, couple of months ago. And they had the property surveyed. Uh, so all that information should be on the record. The septic system is in the rear of cottage, not the front. Uh, it's, should be a fair distance away from the septic system. But they just had a brand new tight tank put in, uh, I think November. Yeah, I'm not sure when, but it was just recently done.
Okay, well, we, I, I could potentially see this board, if they were so inclined to grant the, um, special permit, probably making a contingent on making sure Board of Health approves, uh, you guys. Obviously, that would be a layup for you, because if it's on the other side of the house, I don't think you need to worry about, uh,
No.
location of it in, in regards to the, uh, to the deck. Um, all right, let me, uh, scroll down to Planning Board memo from February 18th at their Thursday, January 28th, 2021 meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments. I had no comments. Okay. So I'm going to, uh, ask my fellow board members here for their, their thoughts and, uh, uh, any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair? I just have one, and it could be because it's late in the day. I'm looking at the diagram that was provided. Where is the shed going? I mean, the
The deck.
Where is the deck going?
Deck is on the front, the water side of the cottage, right off the front porch.
Okay. And, and how, how large is that, the deck?
It's 12 feet off the cottage and approximately 26 feet in length.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks. Uh, Chris Campo?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Youngquist?
I have no questions. It's just a little bit bigger than the other lot, so there shouldn't be no problem. If they, if they do have a tight tank, then it, it complies.
Even less of an issue. Okay, let's see. Mr. Carmichael?
Are there any site maps available for this? I'm not seeing any.
There should have been one submitted, I believe.
There was one prepared by Zenith. It's in, it's in the back of the packet.
It's in the back of the packet, thanks, John.
That will be Jeff's, your thinking, but I'll take the Did you find it, Chris, or do you have any?
Keep going, I'll come back.
Jerry, any questions, comments?
No questions, no comments.
Krishidi?
Um, no questions, John.
Okay, yeah, I, I personally, I don't see any issue with this as long as you're in compliance with the Board of Health. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm one of five, so, um, Chris, while you're seeing if you can locate the, um,
Yeah, go ahead. I have no concerns. I, I'm not seeing a site map, though.
Yeah, the, uh, John?
Yeah.
The site map that he's included in here is the tight tank design that the Zenith put in.
Oh, okay, show the location of it anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, this was done, uh, 10/21/20, last October.
Still don't see it there, Mr. Uh,
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure you'll take Mr. Youngquist's word for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Um, so, so the plan, um, I, it is a Zenith plan. It shows a proposed, I think it's, I think it says proposed porch on the back, not on the, not on the pond side. And then it shows, uh, the approximate location of the existing septic, et cetera. So if, if the porch is going on the long pond side, I, I don't see that. Is that depicted on this or am I missing it? I'm, I'm
I did submit a second one on that same plan and I sketched in where the, the new deck is proposed. Uh, evidently that was not submitted with that paperwork that you have.
No, it didn't. It had on the back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, who, did somebody, who was speaking up when Amy was answering that question? Not that I care, but I didn't hear the comment.
I said, the, uh, it is on the plan that I have. The, the deck is proposed on the back, not on the front.
Okay, yes, no, correct. All right, do we have any, uh, anyone else on the Zoom call or butters, uh, residents who have any comments or questions? Lake Cam, anyone on Facebook?
Nothing on Facebook.
Okay. Well, um, I guess I'll entertain a motion if anyone so inclined.
I, I make a motion, we grant the special permit for the deck at the front.
And based on the, um, the Zenith plan that was submitted, uh, worried about the contingent, making sure the Board of Health, um,
I would
Sign off, okay.
I would check with them, I'd make a contingency of that. To make
Motion to grant the special permit contingent on Board of Health approval.
Can I add to that, John?
Well, you can ask Jeff if you can add to it, it's his motion.
Jeff, I look
Chris, you can add to it.
Signed off on that as well.
What was that?
You have Concom sign off on that as well, any conditions, order of conditions, because that's next to the lake.
You good with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm good with it. Easy.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so the motion Jeff has proposed is to grant the special permit contingent on Board of Health and Concom approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Nora, seconded it. Any further discussion, questions from the board members? Okay, here we go, roll call. Nora?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chris?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well. So the motion passes unanimously. Kathy will give you the rundown and just make sure you, uh, check with, uh, thumbs up from Board of Health and, um, Concom.
Thank you. Uh, the ZBA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks and then it's submitted to the town clerk. There's a 20-day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it, you'll get the, get the decision in the mail and record it at the registry of deeds. Then you would take the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Thank you. Okay. Good luck, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. All right, so the next agenda item is the Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 23rd at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Jeffrey Melissa Cornell. Special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4 is requested to enclose an existing 12 by 20 foot deck for use as a three-season room as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 5 Morrison Way. Uh, and I don't need to read the rest of the governor's orders into it. So I see
You need to correct that.
Mr. Cornell on the call. I'm assuming you're presenting for yourself, Jeff?
Yes, I am, and it's also 15 Morrison Way.
What did I say?
Five.
Uh, well, I guess we'll go with 15. You know where you live, right?
Yes.
All right, well, tell us what you're doing.
I'm basically building a, a 12 by 20, three-season room. And it's off, it's going to be from an existing deck. And, um, it's approximately 200 square feet. Uh, my lot is 7,441 estimated. And my house is roughly 880 square feet. So it would meet all the guidelines under 25%.
Okay, sounds like, uh, pretty straightforward. So let's see what we have for comments from your fellow boards.
Mr. Chair? Actually, this, this question is actually for Amy for something I'm not quite sure I understand. So in the packet, there's a quit claim deed that at the top is marked canceled. So does that mean this document's not in effect?
Um, I'm pulling that up, I'm checking, um, so, no, that usually means that the fees have been canceled. Um,
Well, and, and my question then relates to, it says, the property shall remain a year-round, one-bedroom dwelling with no further expansion and no increase in flow to the septic system. So would this be considered an expansion, which the deed is not permitting?
We're not increasing. Yes.
Well,
So it's, it's an unfortunate, um, term.
I think that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that has to do with increasing, because the flow to the system aspect of it has to do with increasing, you know, bed space and whatnot. And, and so that's the
Not increasing any bedrooms, so.
Right, so, so it's an, it's an unfortunate, um, term, the way that this deed is written. So I would say that, um, I would agree with the chairman. And, and we, we've discussed this, um, before, so yeah, the, I, I think that by having the and no increase in flow to the septic system, I think we can rely on that. Um, again, this language is unfortunate. Um, but at the same time, um, that is not necessarily an issue for, um, the zoning board of appeals, because this is a deed restriction. And so Mr. Cornell, um, would be, you know, he, he's in trouble with others, not, not necessarily the zoning board.
If he's increasing the flow, he's going to have to deal with the Board of Health, which is not our purview. And Amy
Okay.
On our purview. We stay in our committee.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand, I just
No, 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 Nora, that wasn't meant for you. Don't, don't take that the wrong way. That, that was a good question.
No, that language, Nora, the language is not good. I, I don't like that language, but I, we know what it means and, and, and that's not our fight.
I'm not increasing the flow.
All right, thanks so much.
So let's read into the record the, um, comments from the Board of Health in a memo dated February 12th. And regards to this petition, we received a copy of the petition for hearing for 15 Morrison Way. The Board of Health requests a sketch that shows the location of the septic components in relation to the proposed, uh, deck prior to making any comment. So Jeff, unless I missed something here, and if I did, I apologize. I thought you were enclosing something that was already there, or you were adding on a deck?
No, it was already there. It's on, um, on the roadside.
Okay, well, my, my recommendation Okay, well, my, my recommendation is, you know, again, this is the Board of Health's purview, but we would, I would recommend just clarifying with them so you don't get yourself into, into.
Yeah, the, the tight tanks are on the other side of the property, way on the side of the property, so they would.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they're wording it, uh, proposed deck, because the deck's already there, you're just putting a roof over it. Um, which doesn't have any impact on where the septic is located. Okay, Planning Board meeting, uh, February eighteenth at their February eleventh, twenty twenty-one meeting. The Planning Board reviewed Bubber's petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. And I believe that is all the comments we have. So, uh, we'll go around the horn and change it up. I'll go backwards this time. Uh, Chris, any comments? Chris, Chris Sheedy, sorry.
Uh, no, I'm good. Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Gary?
Just a quick clarification, Mr. Will. Uh, you said it's on the pilgrim side, that deck you're enclosing as part of the.
Yes.
Application.
Yes.
On that deck, on that side of your property.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Carmichael?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Chris Campo?
No questions.
And Nora?
I'm good, thanks.
Well, other than the clarification on the, the deed, as I thought, this is a pretty benign request, so I will, uh, well, before I entertain a motion, do we, uh, Facebook have anybody have any questions? Or is anybody on the Zoom call have any residents or Butters have any questions?
Nothing on Facebook.
Okay, anyone feel like making a motion?
I'm making a motion to grant a special permit.
As applied for?
As applied for.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, yea and nay? I'll do the roll call. Nora?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yay.
Jerry?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well. Motion passes unanimously. Kathy, you're up.
The ZBHA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks and then it's submitted to the town clerk. There's a twenty day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it and you'll, will get it back in the mail. You take the decision to the Registry of Deeds to be recorded and then take the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Thank you.
Okay, luck, Mr. Cornell.
Thank you.
The next petition, zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with the general laws, chapter forty-eight as amended. Will conduct public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-third, seven P M. To hear the petition of Alan and Kathy Ian Hoffman. Special permit in the six point three point two, seven point four point six is requested to construct a ten by sixteen shed within the side setback as provided by Lakeville bylaws. The property site is five Marigold Lane. So who is here tonight, um, on behalf of the Hoffmans? Are they here or is someone else?
No, I'm here. Alan Hoffman here.
There you are. Good evening, Mr. Hoffman. So what did you tell, you're, you're doing? It looks pretty self-explanatory, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a shed delivered and put in my driveway to, for storage purposes on the property.
Okay, how much coverage on the lot right now? You're gonna ma- making it any more detrimental over the twenty-five percent or?
I, I did not know about that being an issue, but I don't believe so. It shouldn't be.
Well, we have information in front of us that I'm sure myself and our board can clarify.
It's, yes.
So. Uh, let me just go around the horn here as we're all looking through the paperwork. Uh, Nora, do you have any questions?
I have good time.
Okay, Chris Campo?
No question.
Jeff?
Uh, no questions.
Chris Carmichael?
Is there an order of conditions from the Concom? Because this is on the water as well.
Uh, it went out of board. I usually read the first, but let me check.
They did stop by last week and reviewed the property and found no issues, because there was no digging or anything that'd be done.
Yeah, I don't have anything from them, but it's probably just because if they just came by last week, but we can always, uh, if we're, we're so inclined to. Grant the special permit, we can always make a contingent upon Concom approval. Good point, Chris. Other questions, Chris, or you good?
No, I'm good other than that.
Jerry?
No questions.
Chris Sheedy?
No, I'm good, John.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Nora?
I show that there is something from Concom that says the site was visited on February eighteenth. The proposed location for ten by sixteen shed is proximate to the pond and in the buffer zone. However, the placement of a shed will not impact the resource and no further action is required.
Hmm. Well, I'm glad you're getting all this information.
Kathy prints my packets for me.
Yeah, I think that went out later, after the original pocket went.
Yeah, I'm trying to save trees here, you know, and so I'm, I'm trying to do everything on my computer, but maybe I need to revert back. But fortunately, we have seven sets of eyes here looking at everything, so that'll force us to make sure we don't miss anything. So Concom's okay, so we don't need to worry about them. Um, having said that, anyone inclined to, uh, oh, any, uh, anyone on the call want to, uh, public, uh, want to comment? Butters, any comments on, uh, Facebook, Lake Cam?
Nothing on Facebook.
I don't see any hands here, so now I will entertain a motion if anyone is so inclined to. Move this forward.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the special permit as requested to construct a ten by sixteen shed within this, uh, side setback.
Okay, so the side setback will be as requested, um, Mr. Hoffman.
Excellent.
As far as the distance goes. Uh, do we have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, yea, opposed, nay? Nora?
Yay.
Jeff Youngquist?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael? Chris Carmichael, you're on mute.
My bad, yay.
Jerry?
Yay.
And I'm in favor as well, so your special permit is granted, motion passes unanimously, and Kathy's gonna. Educate you on the process.
Excellent.
The ZBHA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks and then it's submitted to the town clerk. There's a twenty day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it and it will be sent to you. You take the decision to the Registry of Deeds after to be recorded and then take the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Good luck, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, our final, um, hearing, um, of the night. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight as amended. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. To hear the petition of Botan- Boston Botanical Incorporated. A special permit under seven point four point six is requested to operate an adult use marijuana establishment as both a marijuana cultivator and marijuana product manufacturer. Four seventy-five Kenneth W. Welch Drive as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site owner, the property site is owned by Louis, I believe it's O'Tur. If I'm saying it incorrectly, please correct me.
Sounds good to me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, um. I am going to pass some of the heavy lifting off to our much more equipped, um, Town Council to make sure that we go through the process here correctly. Um, and Amy, if you don't mind, um, where this is, I think, I mean, this is the first, uh, marijuana facility coming before this zoning board. Um, I think I. Chris may have been involved at, at, at some of the prior ones, but I, I know a lot of folks have not been involved to, to the extent, uh, with most of the, the previous ones that have come before us. So maybe if you can kind of walk us through the processes to, you know, what we, what our role in, I mean, obviously, we, they're looking to, to get a special permit issued. But this is a little different than what, um, someone put in the deck on.
Correct, it is. Um, and so, um, the zoning bylaw has a, you know, a specific section for marijuana uses. Um, there are, um, five or six marijuana uses and, um, Boston Botanicals is doing a cultivation and product manufacturing use. Which is a little bit more benign than, you know, a retail use, and so, um. However, in your zoning bylaw, it's all, um, every single use has to go by the same set of regulations. And so, um, first of all, I will note that the, um, that Boston Botanicals does have a host community agreement with, um, the town of Lakeville. That is one of the requirements that they have to come before, um, before they come before you, they have to have a host community agreement. So, um, there were a couple of comments on, um, from other boards, most, um, you know, most importantly was the, um, fire department. Was looking for, um, you know, some more, better access, I would say, to the property, which, um, it appears to me that, um, the Boston Botanicals has provided. They've provided a gravel, um, road which will provide access to three sides of the building. Um, and then the other thing is that, um, a fenced in loading area, um, which I think that, um, the planning board actually recommended that, which is a great idea. So, um, and they have agreed to put that in, so that, that's on their, um, their updated plan, so they have that. And so, um, again, with regard to a special permit, we're looking at, you know, not more detrimental to the neighborhood. But again, we also have a list of requirements in the zoning bylaw, which, um, it appears that they meet most of these. Um, so the marijuana uses, um, they have to be in the marijuana overlay district, which they are. They're located in that district. Um, they cannot be within five hundred feet of a public or private school. Um, and that's, um, the straight that is measured, it's, it's not necessarily measured from lot line to lot line. It's measured from the straight line from the nearest point of the property line in question to the nearest point of the property line where the marijuana use will be located. So it would be kind of building to building and, and they are not, um, within that. Um, and then they have to be, um, because this is a cultivation facility, they have to be separated by adjacent uses by a, um, a fifty foot, um, buffer strip. Unless, um, they can find that adequate buffering, um, can be provided. That's the one, that, that is a one that I'm not quite sure on, because they're going into a, an existing facility. So I'm not sure if they have that fifty foot buffer. Um, so that was one thing that I had flagged on the, on the plan that I received. Um, and, um, they have to be located in a permanent building, which they are. Um, and then they have provided, so there are, um, numerous, um, requirements that they have to provide in their application, which, um, they, they have. Um, you know, um, it was actually, you know, quite refreshing, just their application was extremely robust, which was, which was nice to see. Um, on, on the first time around, you know, normally we have to ask for all of these things, um, but, you know, it, they clearly, um, read the bylaw. And provided quite a bit of information for us. Um, so, so there's a couple of things tonight that if you guys want to, um, entertain, you know, issuing a special permit. Um, the first thing is that I think we just need to confirm that they have that buffer between adjacent properties. And if they don't, that they are providing screening that will adequately address that. Um, and then, you know, we, we have to figure out, um, you know, the, um, hours of operation. Um, and then if the applicant could maybe just address, um, you know, odors coming from the facility, because this is a, um, cultivation and product manufacturing facility. I'm assuming, um, that they have adequate HVAC systems that will prevent that from happening, so we, we just want to hear from them. Um, you know, to make sure that they have that. Um, the security system, they have provided a security system, um, plan. That, um, we, we have, um, I, we don't, um, that, that hasn't been, um, distributed, because that is, um, there's some. You know, public records issues with that, because it's, it is pri- it is a security plan, so we didn't send that out to everybody. Um, but it's, you know, it seems that that will, um, sufficiently provide for security at the facility. Um, and the other thing to remember with this is that, um, the bylaw sometimes tracks the, um, Cannabis Control Commission, which is the CCC. Yeah, um, it will track their regulations, so they have to get a license from the CCC, which is, um, focused on not necessarily the location, although the CCC does look at the location. But the CCC more focuses on the company and the, um, company's, um, business practices such as security and things like that. So, um, we can be a little bit, you know, reassured that the CCC is also taking a look at this. Um, their regulations are, uh, you know, pretty, so far, pretty stringent, uh, you know, just, that's in my opinion. Um, but, um, and, um, the other thing is that, so, um, we will, um, you know, we'll make sure that the term of this special permit follows the, um, owner, follows the applicant. So, um, you know, they can't necessarily right away sell this, you know, facility to somebody else and walk away. So we are, we do have this, you know, a little bit of a reassurance, and that is in your bylaw. So, um, you know, so we can make sure that that, um, you know, that that happens. So, uh, you know, um, Mr. Chairman, I guess at this time, I would, I kind of just quickly, and I, I know I talk real fast.
That, no, that, that was great. That's, I, I, it was, I think it was helpful to, to, to folks who haven't, you know, had, had one of these, uh, special permits applied for before. So, um, you've, you've given us, um, and the applicant as well, some, some points or questions that we need to clarify. So, um, what I, what I would suggest at this point is, um, so listen, I, I think we have three gentlemen, if I'm correct, on the call. Uh, who are here on behalf of, uh, Boston Botanical, um, unless I'm missing someone else. If I am, let me know, but having said that, uh, who is going to present? And since Brandon doesn't have his mic muted, I'm guessing you're gonna be the guy presenting, correct?
I am, Mr. Chairman, although, uh, Attorney Quazwell did a great job, uh, basically doing my job for me here and briefing everybody. Um, so, uh, my name is Brandon Kurtzman. I'm an attorney with Vicente Cedarburg. And I'm here on behalf of Boston Botanical seeking a special permit for marijuana cultivation and manufacturing facility at four seventy-five Kenneth Welch Drive. Pursuant to section seven four six of the zoning bylaw. Um, as Town Council pointed out, uh, property is in the, uh, industrial zone. Uh, and meets the necessary buffer requirements for this use pursuant to the zoning bylaw. And, um, before I go any further, I just wanted to kind of briefly talk about, um, Vicente Cedarburg as a firm. We're a national law firm that specializes in representing cannabis companies in states where marijuana has been legalized. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we represent over a hundred companies, um, and help them, uh, get their state and local approval for cannabis licenses, licenses, excuse me. Help them get open and operational and then, um, help them remain compliant with, uh, state laws, state and local laws and regulations. Uh, with me tonight, um, is the CEO of Boston Botanicals, um, Edward Phipps. Um, who I would just like to briefly turn it over to, so he can introduce himself and speak a little bit about, uh, his experience in the cannabis industry, um, already. And then Edward, just before that, I'm also, um, with the Boston Botanicals engineer, uh, Tony Cappacetti. Um, and, uh, Boston Botanicals architect, Keith Benicord. Uh, so Edward, why don't I turn it over to you briefly and, um, tell us a little bit about, um, your experience?
Thank you, Brandon, and, uh, thank you to the board. Appreciate you taking the time. Uh, my name is Edward Phipps. I'm the CEO and President of Boston Botanical. Um, I'm from Massachusetts originally. I grew up in Brockton, Mass. I began my career as a financial accountant, uh, around eight years ago. I decided to move up to Maine and start Casco Botanical. and partake in the state's medical marijuana program. Since that time, my team and I have built and operated a 5,000 square foot cultivation and manufacturing facility in Casco, Maine, a 10,000 square foot cultivation facility in Sanford, Maine, and a licensed beverage plant producing THC infused beverages in Portland, Maine. Perhaps most importantly, we have created a very scalable concept and effective setup standard operating procedures to produce high quality, clean cannabis consistently. And we have done that through firsthand experience with every part of the process. I'm very proud to say we're now in over a hundred stores in Maine. And the plan the whole time has been to bring back our blueprints to our home state of Massachusetts. Happy to answer any questions and look forward to speaking with you. Give it back to Brandon now. Thank you.
Thanks, Edward. So just to kind of move things along here, in terms of a history of approvals that we've received so far from the town of Lakeville. As Town Council pointed out, we submitted our site plan review to the, to the planning board. And the hearing was last week, the planning board approved the, approved the, the plan subject to recommendations from the board and from the fire chief particularly, particularly relating to the, the access road and the, the parking and loading area. And we put together the updated plan and submitted it to the ZBA. I apologize, we weren't able to get it to the ZBA sooner. It was sent this morning. It, it seems like the, the ZBA did receive it. If it, if it pleases the, the board, I could share my screen and I was gonna turn it over to our engineer, Tony Cappacetti from Hayes Engineering to, to speak about some, some of the updates that were incorporated into the plan and maybe some of the, the buffer issues that Town Council referenced.
That's fine. Go ahead, Tony. You can share your screen and present.
Hey, Tony, I'm gonna. All right. You guys see that? Okay?
Thinking still.
Think you have to pick the window that you want to share. There we go.
It's good. You guys see this?
Thank you. For the record, Tony Cappacetti with Hayes Engineering, six oh three Salem Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. The site plan you had before, before you was an existing approximately 20,000 square foot building, metal and concrete block. The the proposed development plan includes constructing twenty-six parking spaces, two of which will be fenced in and closed loading area at the two roller doors. And those lead into the, to the shipping and receiving area, shipping and receiving to the site. Doesn't occur through, you know, you think in, in the industrial zone, you think shipping and receiving occurs through eighteen wheelers. The CCC has restricted the, the distribution to the passenger vehicle, one ton strength of type van. So they're, they're essential, essentially Amazon delivery being, for lack of a better comparison. So that's, that's why, you know, standard nine by eighteen spaces for work or nine by twenty, I'm sorry. And there's very limited site changes to the existing site, just striping the different parking lot and closing those two spaces and constructing the dumpster area. The dumpster area is for normal rubbish and trash, not for any marijuana containing product. That is all governed by CCC regulations and has to be destroyed in the name of the property. The existing site drive, we did an analysis on stopping site distance and there's adequate site distance for both approaches from the east and west. There is a little bit of tree clearing that needs to occur to the northwest, just some overhanging branches to open up that sightline, but nothing, nothing major in the way, just, it's good practice and would be open to any condition that requires that to continue to be maintained through operations. The other comment that we issued to the fire department was even though it's an existing building, the fire chief wanted to have access to three sides, which we did provide originally with a, a geo grid on top of a gravel base. We found out through the chief that that is not his preferred method. So we're going with a ten inch gravel base and a three inch fresh stone or stone dust wearing course above that. And then we're providing edging on both sides of some sort of colored concrete. So that area will be visible. And we'll provide delineations for where the that access road is for, for firefighters to access and as well as the, the ongoing maintenance. It'll be plowed on a, a regular basis. I saw that note about the, the microphone and I think what I have is, I have a little heater above my desk here and that might be drowning me out. I apologize for that. So that is essentially the revisions that we, we made. The question about the buffers on the existing building is forty point four feet and forty point nine feet off of the westerly property line. And we don't control the full fifty feet. Having said that, there is a forty foot setback in the industrial zone side setback. So no structure could be placed within forty feet, which essentially provides an eighty foot buffer. And within that eighty feet is the the BVW on that westerly parcel that's Lawrence and Nancy Pink's property.
So. So, Mr. Cappacetti, if, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. The, the fifty foot buffer is, it's from adjacent uses. So and how far would this building be from another building? That's what I couldn't figure out from the plans.
So it'd be a minimum of eighty feet to another building. Because we have forty feet on our property and then the building on the adjacent lot to the west could be no closer than forty feet from that property line providing eighty feet. And in reality, that area is all wetlands. So you wouldn't be able to put a structure in that.
So, so would it be, so would there, is there already, because there's wetlands there, are there already, is there already built in screening, I guess?
Correct. On that westerly property line, it is, it is wooded. We will have to clear some minor vegetation about fifteen to twenty feet in some areas just to provide that fire road, which I think is a a, a good trade off. We will be going in front of conservation for a request for determination of applicability for that work.
Okay, thank you.
But beyond that, the site remains pretty well unchanged from what was existing. We did also provide some replacement trees. We're gonna lose a, a tree at the bend, just small decorative Japanese maple at the bend of that fire road. And then there was another tree, again, another small Japanese maple, possibly a burning bush. It was, it was hard to tell because there's no leaves on it adjacent to the sign. So what we're proposing is two red maples along the street to, to make up for those two trees to to also provide some additional screening of the building from Kenneth Welch. And that's up the northerly sideline of the, the property.
Okay, does that kind of wrap everything up, Tony?
Yes, if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to, to answer them.
Okay. Do we, could, actually, I don't think it's you. I think it's the, I think Brandon, you have the screen that you can.
Yep. So I was just gonna flip. Can you guys see the layout of the facility now?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I was just gonna shift back and speak a little bit about some of the operational features. I think that some of the board members who have, have some familiarity with these cultivation facilities, but for those, for those who don't, we're happy to provide some more information, which is what we want to do now. So the, the facility is set on three point four acres and it's 20,000 square feet of 20,000 square, 20,000 square foot building on that three point four acres. The hours of operation of the facility are proposed to be eight, eight AM to six PM, Monday through Sunday. It's important to understand that with these facilities, this is not some, it's not a business that will be open to the, the public. And I'd just like to draw everyone's attention to the, the floor plan to kind of speak to what the operations are like. So the entrance to the facility is over here by this B four. Any employee visitor or vendor that is going to be accessing the facility will need to have a, a employee identification or visitor, visitor identification in order to, in order to get inside. And that is checked prior to entry. You can see the security office is, is right next to the, the entry to the, to the building. This is a, a cultivation facility and a manufacturing facility. So you can see the areas of the plan towards the, you know, the top and, and on the left where the cultivation activities are going to occur. You can see your vegetation room and your flowering rooms and fertigation room here. There's also rooms where the plant will be dried and cured over here. As required by the state, Boston Botanicals will be implemented a seed to sale tracking system. This allows, you know, this requires the plants, as soon as they reach eight inches in height, to be tagged with a RFID tag. And then they are tracked throughout the cultivation process until they're ultimately harvested. And once they are harvested, part of that marijuana that isn't sold as actual flower is going to be manufactured and processed into marijuana infused products, which is also going to be occurring at this facility. So you can see the extraction room here and the MIP marijuana infused product room here. And that's where Boston Botanicals is going to turn these products into the type of products you will see in the, the market today in Massachusetts. These are your vaporizer cartridges, your edibles, your topicals, everything that the Massachusetts consumers are looking for in, in terms of marijuana products. Boston Botanicals is going to be using a solventless extraction process in order to produce the oils. That means that they won't be using a gas such as butane or CO2. They use water or ice in order to do the extractions and create the oil. They anticipate potentially going to a solvent based extraction process in the future using most likely CO2. And but for now, it's just going to be limited to the, to the, the solventless water, water and ice. As we talked about in the, the planning board meeting and one of the updates to the plan is the secure loading zone. You can see on the side of the building here where we have the shipping and receiving and that will be done in a fenced in secure area now. So the, you know, no trucks are going to be involved in sort of the delivery process or the, the shipping process. So goods will come in to be used for cultivation and then finished products and marijuana will be shipped out to consumers. The, the process is coordinated with security and randomized at, at all times. The vehicles that are typically used for this process are the Sprinter vans. And the way that it works is a van pulls up to the facility, pulls into the gated area, the gated area is closed off, and then the, the shipment that is ready for, ready for delivery is in small tote bags and is loaded into the van and then the van exits the facility and goes about delivering it, which to whatever, you know, retailer or other marijuana establishment that delivery is going to. The typical loading and unloading delivery process takes about, takes about five minutes. So this is not a elongated process that opens us up to any type of real security threat. Speaking of security threats, I just wanted to speak briefly about the security features that will be a part of this facility. The security features mainly are comprised of limited access areas that we already discussed. Nobody who's not working at the facility or an authorized visitor or vendor is going to be allowed to get into the facility. Additionally, within the facility, areas are limited to the employees that are necessary to do the jobs in those areas. So just because you are an employee facility, doesn't mean, you know, you would have access to all the flower rooms or to the MIP rooms. So the cultivation employees will have access to the flower rooms, the manufacturing facilities will have access to the manufacturing rooms and, and so on and so forth. In, in addition to the limited access area, there are security cameras throughout the interior and exterior of the facility. The exterior facility captures a three hundred sixty degree view of the, of the entire facility. And anybody who is on the outside of the facility, the interior cameras pursuant to the commission regulations are at every entryway and exit and window and anywhere where there is marijuana. So you would have cameras in all of the flower rooms, you would have cameras in the vault. You would have cameras in the MIP room and the packaging room, extraction room, and essentially anywhere that, anywhere that there was marijuana. In addition to the security cameras, there are, there is a alarm system. There's a primary alarm system and a backup alarm system. The backup alarm system is for redundancy purposes in the event that the primary alarm system doesn't work. In addition to the, the, the primary alarm, you have duress alarms that are located throughout the facility. These are silent alarms that are activated in the event that somebody is under duress and panic alarms, which are audible alarms to identify that there is a, a serious emergency that, that is occurring. And then of course, finished product and cash, to the extent that there is cash at this facility will, will be stored in the vault, which is a secure area on the interior of the facility. You can see it right here. Right here in the middle. In addition to sort of these security requirements, it's important to know that no onsite consumption is permitted at this facility and Boston Botanicals, as well as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, have a, have a strict anti diversion or no tolerance for diversion policy so that anybody who is caught diverting marijuana, which means, you know, the marijuana is not going to its intended purpose, is, is immediately terminated and the commission, the Cannabis Control Commission, the regulatory agency for the, for the cannabis, for this cannabis businesses in Massachusetts is, is notified. Just to, to speak, and, and I guess Edward can speak a little bit to this too. The, the, the odor mitigation. I guess Edward, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. You can probably speak more about this than, than I can. I can speak at least to a high level, but you know, having a cultivation facility in Maine, you're familiar with sort of the, the carbon filters and HVAC systems that will be implemented to make sure that odor is, is a nuisance to, you know, the outside of the building and the surrounding area.
Yeah, absolutely. So firstly, all the cultivation rooms will be sealed. That will prevent any ambient air from escaping or limiting, limiting, limiting it greatly. It's also great for us to control the climate. No outside air is going to be imported to any of the cultivation rooms to prevent diffusion of ambient air. No air is going to be exported out or coming in. In addition to all cultivation areas and areas adjacent to cultivation areas will be outfitted with a carbon filtration system that will be engineered to filter the air, the cubic footage of the room in a matter of minutes. Those will be kept on 24/7. And then from there, it's simply a matter of maintaining those. Um, and then from there, it's simply a matter of maintaining those units, uh, making sure that the pre-filters, actual filters themselves are changed out regularly. Um, what we do to stay ahead of it is their lifespan for those are about eight months. We do it every six months. These are systems we use now with great success. Both of our facilities and both Costco and Sanford are really close, honestly, to residents and, uh, hotels and things of that nature. The climate's a little different up there. Um, and we've never had complaints in all our years.
Um, so I mean, that is sort of the, um, the, the high level information a, about the facility. I wanted to allow the board to, um, ask questions. Obviously we have Edward and Tony, I mean, and Keith and myself, um, available to, uh, to address, uh, any questions that the board may have. So, um, with that, I will conclude sort of my formal presentation and open it up for questions. So thank you guys and, um, what's, uh, what's on your mind?
So great. Do me a favor, Brandon. Could you, um, unshare the screen just so I can, uh, get our grid back here? Thank you for the, uh, for the presentation. I, I think you hit on most of, um, uh, the questions that, uh, that Amy had had, uh, off the, uh, off the bat. Um, you touched on hours, you, you touched on odors. I'm not saying that we're not going to have some board members who want more clarification, but, um, you know, I'll comment as far as the security goes, um, and I do know this from, from past applicants and, and talking to a number of folks, um, involved in the industry that, uh, you know, I'll, I'll echo what Amy said, you know, the CCC has some pretty strict guidelines, um, that, you know, our police chief looks through them as well. So, um, I, I'm more than confident that, uh, that, that the security systems and, and protections and issues will be, will be taken care of and addressed. So, um, it sounds like the 50 foot buffer issue, um, based on honestly nothing, if, if nothing else, based on our, our internal town bylaws and, and what distances need to be in place. Uh, in addition to the fact that there's, there's wetlands and whatnot are, uh, already there. You're, you're well outside of that 50 foot buffer. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, hours of operation, eight o'clock to six o'clock.
That's correct.
Which is a pretty standard normal business operating. Um, do you have any intention or, or any inclination down the road of, of having additional shifts? Or based on what that facility can produce is, is one shift? Or however many folks work in that eight to six timeframe, is that going to kind of max out at that location?
Edward, I mean, you can speak to this.
Yeah, I could speak to that. Um, uh, we don't foresee anything. I mean, we'll be building up the entire facility, um, at once. There won't be, uh, we don't have any immediate plans for expansion. Um, yeah, that, that, that will, that will certainly do it. And even if, when, and I'm not even saying we have any immediate plans, but, um, there are facilities now, no matter what, what's happening is always around that timeframe as well. Um, there's no need for us to have a, a midnight shift or anything like that. Um, unless there's a, you know, a case of emergency, which never happens either, you know, or hasn't happened. I can't say it won't happen, but.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, I guess at this point, um, before I open it up to the board, Amy, is there anything that wasn't addressed that, um, that you had, um, that you'd seen or reviewed? And, you know, obviously you've been spending a, a little bit of time reviewing this, the application for us. If there's anything that you need addressed upfront, if not, I'm going to kind of go around the board and get their opinions or questions.
Sure. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I did have, I did have just three, um, quick questions. So, um, I, I am, um, curious as to, um, the, the truck traffic with deliveries. So how many, um, you know, how many, um, trucks slash vans are we expecting a day to come in and out of here?
I can speak to that. Um, in terms of outgoing products, once a week. In terms of incoming products, probably once every two weeks. Obviously timing is certain deliveries, but we don't, um, our current facilities in this facility, we don't have an immense amount of traffic. We usually get it from one or two vendors or maybe a handful more for specific things, but, um, that would be it at the most.
Okay. And then, um, where are you, um, at the CCC with your license?
So we are actually. Um, Brandon, let me know if you want to take this, but I can, if.
Yeah, I mean, you can, if you want to, if you want to take it and then I can, you know, say what's left, um, that, that works.
Yeah, absolutely. So we are, um, acquiring, there was an existing license holder at this location. We're acquiring their licenses. Um, that application has been submitted and we expect that to be, and certainly this is Brandon's confirmation, he was more well versed with these processes. Um, we expect that to take anywhere between two and four months.
Okay. And so, um, the bylaw does not allow, um, oper, uh, obviously the bylaw does not, even though, even though this board could, um, issue a special permit, um, the bylaw and the CCC do not allow for the operation to begin until they actually receive their license from the CCC. So, um, even though that's on a separate track, um, you, you are not actually granting, you know, a license to them to be able to do this. That is in the CCC's hands. And then my, my final, um, question, well, right now, um, is, um, are there any, um, future intentions of, um, looking into this, um, whole delivery?
No, not for us. No, not at all. Honestly, what we do up here now, we'll do down there as we do wholesaling right to retailers. We don't do anything direct to consumers, um, or we do a little bit up here because we're required to actually, but down there we have no attention to. Wholesale to retailers is what we do best and is what we'll continue to do.
Okay. So, um, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing is that, um, the, um, the applicant has entered into a host community agreement with the town where, um, you know, they are, there is a community impact fee. They are, there is a, um, an annual, um, you know, a donation, a charitable donation. But, um, they all, they have also agreed to, um, look into, um, local vendors, local employment, all of these things first. And the host community agreement also provides that, um, for the odor, um, and things like that, that, um, you know, they, they cannot, there cannot be odors coming from the building. So there is a, a little bit of a, you know, a double layer of protection on that. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
No, I, I appreciate that. Yeah, this, you know, we're, 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 to, to Amy's point, we, we, we're potentially issuing a permit, special permit for them to operate out of the facility at seven, 475 Kenneth Welch Drive. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, they have a lot of other hurdles and a lot of other entities they need to answer to. And, and as Amy put, they, we can issue the special permit, but unless the state issues their permit, they can't do anything. So, uh, I can just buy the building and wait.
Yes. And, and then the term of this special permit will be, um, contingent upon their license. So if for some reason their license goes away, their special permit also goes away. And so we will make that a condition of the special permit along with, you know, uh, the hours of operation and a few other things too.
Correct.
Okay.
Before I, uh, circle around the horn here, um, just for the record, I'm going to, I'm going to read some of the other, um, boards' comments, um, into the record. And, um, it looks like, um, we have a memo dated February 19th from the Conservation Commission. I finally found that memo, Nora. I'm going to have to print them out like you did so I don't miss them. 475 Kenneth Welch Drive, this project was subject to, was the subject of previous site plan review for the planning board. Uh, more details were requested to determine if a notice of intent or request for determination will be required. Um, I'm guessing you folks, uh, maybe Tony would be the one I'd be addressing that to, uh, knows that you need to make sure you're, you're all set with, uh, conservation, correct?
Yes, uh, per your chairman, uh, conservation would be the, uh, last permit that we'd go to, uh, seek. Uh, the, the design revisions kind of get finalized between the ZBA and the planning board. Uh, now that we know that we're in the wetlands with that fire lane or within the buffer zone to the wetland, not the wetland itself, uh, we will be filing with conservation.
Amy, to that point, um, and I'm not suggesting we're, we're going to approve anything or grant anything, uh, tonight. But I'm not saying we are or aren't, but if we were to, um, would this be something where we need to wait for CONCOM? Or would, would we approve the special permit, um, subject to, how, what, what comes first?
So that, that would be up to the applicant. If the applicant thinks that, um, that the conservation approval will, will move anything, then, um, they would have to come back to you. However, we, this is an established, um, building. The building is there. So we're really looking at the gravel road, which is impervious. So I, I, I think that if, um, I think that the board could make it contingent upon Conservation Commission approval. Um, but, but just know that if anything, if conserva, if the Conservation Commission requires that something is moved, then they have to come back for a modification of their special permit. Cause their special permit is contingent upon the plan, the, um, the most recent plan that was sent to us, which shows the gravel driveway.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And it's the applicant's preference, um, to have the special permit be conditioned on conservation, um, approval. If, uh, so we, in, in understanding that if conservation were to say that we need to make changes, then obviously we would, we would have to come back, um, if the plan is different than, uh, what is, what is before you today and what was approved by the planning board.
Great. Uh, also for the record, uh, I have a memo from the Board of Health dated February 12th. Um, and the portion of the memo that pertains to this applicant, uh, we received a copy of the petition for hearing from 475 Kenneth Welch Drive. The Board of Health has no reason to recommend denial due to public health issues at this time, but would like to inform the owner that a Title V inspection will be required prior to occupancy, which is standard anyway. So, um, yeah, not looking for comments, just reading it into the record, guys. Uh, and leave the last memo I have for the record. Planning board memo of February 18th, 2021. At their Thursday, February 11th, 2021 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board recommends either a fenced in area or vehicle loading of that sufficient security measure to be implemented for parking lot loading, which Amy had referenced earlier on and has been addressed in the presentation by, um, Tony. So, um, having said that, I'm going to give everyone else a chance to speak now. So, um, I am going to go in reverse order here on my screen. So don't anyone take offense. Chris Carmichael, questions, clarifications, concerns?
I have a bunch of them, so I hope I don't take up too much time. I'll try to go right through them. Again, you only plan to do retail and not cultivation? And you prepared to have us put that into the special permit conditions?
Counselor Carmichael, it, uh, it was cultivation and manufacturing. There's not retail at this facility.
So you'd be okay with us, um, calling that out in the special permit that no retail at this site?
Absolutely. The, the special permit is only for cultivation and manufacturing. We don't have any, any intention to do retail at this facility.
Um, I'm just going to jump in for a second, Chris. I'm not so sure that, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. I just want to keep us honest here. The permit is only for what's applied for, but to your point, Chris, we can, for the record, it'll be in the minutes that they agreed that they have no intention on, on doing retail. I, I, I know you're, you're, the goal we're accomplishing here, which I agree with. But yeah, I, I think whatever we, whatever we issue for, that's it. They can't do anything else at the break of the law. So.
I, I agree. They have to come out for a special permit for retail, but I just want to make sure that it's part of this record as well. That's all.
And it's also, um, the host community agreement also only allows for cultivation and product manufacturing.
Great. Thanks, Amy. So because that site plan came in so late, has fire department had a chance to re-review that? And do we have an impact current, impact statement from fire? And then if not, um, I would motion a continuance until we do. That gravel road was a great concern to the fire department, uh, Chief O'Brien. And I think maybe, uh, impact statements from CONCOM and, and fire as well as police might be in, in, in order. Um, so that mean, make sure that everybody's all set. Um, those are my concerns right now. I have a couple of other questions too. Do you want to address the impact statements though?
Well, why don't we, why don't we address them one at a time? Has, has, uh, our fire chief had a chance to review the updated, uh, plans that, uh, Mr. Carmichael referencing? Uh, Kathy? You'll be, you'll be with Kathy?
Okay. I did forward that to him when I forwarded it to the board and I did ask him to reply if that plan met, you know, met his satisfaction, which I, I didn't hear back from him, but he does have the plan.
All right. Well, uh, just, let me just interject and, and, and I, this is a process. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if, um, Boston Botanical was expecting us to, you know, vote and approve the special permit tonight. I, I don't recall that that usually happens with, um, these types of applications. So, um, we, we tend to have some follow-up questions and, and you guys, you know, the applicants in the, that ended up having to come back at least for a second meeting. So, um, so we'll, we'll just make a list here, Amy, if you don't mind, and Kathy of what we need to follow up on and, and what, um, the applicant needs to get us for answers. So, um, we can, we can hopefully sew it up at the next meeting. Go ahead, Chris.
Weekend work hours. You said earlier that you're only going to have a couple of deliveries a week. Um, do we really need to have you working till Saturday night at eight o'clock and then all day Sunday from eight to six? So are you prepared to eliminate some of your weekend work hours? I mean, I can see your employees going in and, and, and maintaining the plants or the cultivation of the growing, but weekend deliveries, because you do a butt carriage house. So I would be concerned about, uh, weekend deliveries and, uh, and after hour work hours.
We can, sorry, go on, Brandon.
Yeah, to, uh, you know, based on the nature of the business, uh, cultivation facility where, um, you know, plants need to be tended to, um, as, you know, living organisms, um, it, it is necessary to, to continue operations, um, uh, on the weekends. Uh, eight AM to six AM are, uh, standard hours for, um, businesses on, on the weekends. Um, we don't anticipate that there's going to be, uh, deliveries that are going to create an impact to traffic on, on the weekends. As, uh, Edward pointed out, um, you know, deliveries would, um, you know, be once or twice, uh, once or twice a month. And, and so we don't really anticipate that, uh, there's going to be any real traffic from the facility other than the employees that are, are coming to the, to and from the facility, you know, during their, during their shifts. So we would, would request to keep the proposed eight AM to six PM hours.
Could you reduce the deliveries on the weekend then? I mean, I can understand your employees have to go in there, but can you at least cut back on the, on the deliveries? Uh, for Saturday morning and eliminate them Saturday afternoon and Sunday for the residents in the area?
We can absolutely look, uh, we can absolutely look into reducing the, the deliveries on the weekend. I imagine that most deliveries would be occurring during business hours of the week anyway.
Great. Thank you. So your chillers and rooftop units are going to be going pretty hard, um, to maintain that 70 degrees or whatever your growth, um, is needed inside. That, that, that's going to be pretty loud. Again, um, are you prepared to put rooftop screening up for these units on the roof?
Yeah. So Keith can, Keith can speak to that, but we, we are prepared to put, uh, screening up. So the, um, the, any units on the roof aren't visible from, uh, the exterior facility. Um, and to, to address potential, uh, noise issues that these, these machines, uh, and Ed can speak to this, um, aren't, uh, it don't, don't really produce as, as much noise as, as you would, as you would think that would cause a, a nuisance, um, to, uh, to the surrounding properties. But Ed, you can speak to that a little bit more if, if, uh, um, Mr. Carmichael has further questions.
Yeah, I can just say it's given our current facilities, um, uh, we, it's sincerely, they don't produce a lot of noise. We really are, Costco's facility is right next to a, a motel and right across street from residences and right next to an antique store. Um, we've never had a complaint in that front. Um, you need a lot of them, but they, they don't produce a, a whole lot of noise. And we've, like I said, we've never had a complaint by any means.
Well, in, in my experience, I've seen a lot of complaints from similar rooftop units. So I would ask for screening on the backside towards carriage house lane and then the side abutment, uh, towards that other residential property. So that's, that would be my, my recommendation. Um, and then um, you I I read your narrative, um, you're gonna be shipping off any composting. Um, are you prepared to eliminate any composting or large storage of compost on the site? So we don't have odor and then uh, potential fire hazard.
Um, yeah, Ed, you wanna speak to the the waste management a little bit?
Yes, um, you know, we we we, you know, in terms of in terms of the waste, I mean, with the um, we do, you know, we like do like to repurpose a lot of things um, relative to composting. Um, but what we do is when we, you know, we're very adamant about uh, I'm I'm pretty big into composting and the way we do it, it's 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 ensuring that um, there's no bad odors because it's aerobic composting versus anaerobic composting. Um, it also helps us reduce waste uh, and and that being as well.
Well, I can appreciate that, but it it also is an increased fire load. Um, so as long as that the the fire department is okay with that, and you're not composting outside and you're increasing odor over to the neighborhood, I guess I'd be fine with it. So but I just do want it addressed. Maybe you could update your narrative to include that?
Of course.
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you. Um, because you use so much energy, are you prepared to put solar arrays on the rooftop to cut down on how much uh, energy you are using?
We we're considering a number of uh, measures to reduce the energy capacity, LED lighting, there's uh, the the Cannabis Control Commission has uh, regulations that limit how much um, wattage we can have per plant, fifty watts per plant. Um, I I don't know if we've specifically looked into uh, solar energy. We want to work with the local energy providers to um, find any um, programs that are available to limit our our energy consumption. Um, if there's a a possibility of uh, you know, using renewable energy, uh, it's it's something that we definitely want to explore. Uh, at the time, we haven't contemplated uh, in installing uh, solar panels on the roof. Uh, we don't own the, we don't own the building. Um, and and so we would have to discuss what that would look like with the with our landlord.
I understand a lot of other facilities or other towns are actually requiring these solar arrays for these types of facilities. So um, uh, it's just a consideration. So that's it for my question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Amy, can I ask you a quick question in regards to, because I know in a lot of cases, and I just guess a point of clarification with with a lot of uh, projects, our our petition is to come before this board. Do we have a more oversight on things like where they get their energy from, or is that within our our purview? I just want to make sure we don't go outside of where we're supposed to be.
Um, yeah, it it's not, it's not um, specifically laid out in the bylaw. However, again, we're dealing with a special permit, which is, you know, not more detrimental. Obviously, having renewable energy would um, you know, would be a plus for both the company and the town. Um, but no, it's not something that, um, in my opinion, that you could um, you know, deny the project because they're not doing that.
Okay. Yeah, I I I understand. I I I we're hoping there there could neighbors and they and they want to
Exactly.
town and whatnot, but um, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna step on our feet here and tell them to, you know, change things or do things that we really don't um, that that we're not supposed to do. Although I I have every faith that they will do whatever they can to to comply and and be good uh, good corporate neighbors. So um, let's see, next, uh, I'm going to ask Jerry, do you have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, a few questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, along the lines of what Chris was just asking about. Um, suppose you lose power to the facility, um, what is your plan for? Is it gonna be any backup generation or generator on site?
Uh, absolutely. So as a as a state requirement, uh, you need to have a a backup power source. Um, so we we will have a a a generator on on site to provide uh, backup power in the event of uh, in the event of a power outage. That's a a state requirement.
Okay. That wasn't um, depicted on any of the drawings inside of your application? Is that correct? I didn't see that on the on your application.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly where the the generator is gonna be located with within the facility. I don't know if um, uh, Tony can can speak to to that, or or we we have specifically figured out where it is gonna be. Tony, any insight there?
It would be within the existing parking lot. Um, my thought is there's an area of existing pavement uh, that would be south of the uh, three spaces, two of which are the in the fenced in loading area. However, they haven't completed MEP design for the project yet. I mean, that's a pretty costly the design, the full interior mechanicals is a pretty costly endeavor, and that's usually something that's not uh, embarked upon until after special permit and uh, CCC permits uh, are issued, or at least the preliminary ones. Um, so that that's kind of the area that we've reserved uh, for. However, it's not definitive at this time. It's all based upon sizing as well.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd like to understand the size of the generator and the the siding of it um, because of the noise potential. Okay?
Right.
All right, um, the next question I had was, can you speak to a little bit of the uh, water quality and and process of the uh, water treatment that you plan to incorporate into your manufacturing?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to to Ed, who can speak a little bit about um, sort of the closed system and uh, you know, renewing the or or reusing the water source.
Yep, absolutely. I mean, soil ecology is a huge part of what we do, which is why I was kind of speaking of the compost side of it, and what that allows us to do for irrigation fertigation is uh, really limit the wastewater. And then not only that, what we do is repurpose it. We capture it and filter it to a small extent to to and then reuse a lot of the water. We don't, it also allows us to limit inputs. So essentially, we'll have the system where we're feeding and refeeding and recapturing a lot of things, and the microbiology that we use, soil ecology really, uh, allows us to do that really effectively.
So I imagine, though, that there's a tank at some point exterior to the structure, right?
Yep, yeah, that'll be in the fertigation room, not exterior, but that'll be in in the the actual facility. So we'll be capturing condensate from ACs and also that wastewater, and that'll be filtered in that fertigation area and then put in a tank to be repurposed through the use of our additional fertilizer.
Okay, so that tank is located in the fertigation room, you're saying?
It is, yep.
Okay, okay. Okay. Um, last question I had was um, um, Brandon talked talked about the use of solvents. Um, I assume you're gonna be using super critical CO2 as part of that solvent, maybe in the future. Is that true?
Yes, um, yeah, that would likely be the case. I mean, that solvent less is is what we're gonna be doing immediately. Um, that would kind of be phase two. Uh, but yes, with without, because that's not a decision we're making right now, that's kind of an assumption more than a liability.
Understood. But I mean, if you do go forward with it in the future, what's your plan for once you've used the CO2 for the, you know, um, as part of the solvent? Are you recycling it? Are you venting it? What's your plan?
Um, not, given that it's not being done at this stage, I, you know, I don't have a a a a a a a a plan in place for that. Um, but that is something where carbon dioxide, I, and this is, this is not my Eric's expertise, and which is why we're not doing it out of the gates. But from my understanding, carbon dioxide, I'd imagine we built a repurpose that to some extent. The main reason why is because cannabis is actually a plant that absorbs a lot of carbon dioxide. We actually use that as supplementation to a small extent. And we are able to, I can't imagine, we can't find ourselves at a place to reuse that. I can't speak definitively without knowing the plan, but um, I I can't imagine we won't be able to, you know, at least, you know, limit it from having to go in the atmosphere.
Okay. All right, um, that's all the questions I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Nora?
You're lucky my list has gone down considerably, John, so.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping by the time we get back to me, there'll be no questions.
All right, uh, great job with the narrative. Uh, and my question um, comes for more of a clarification between the narrative, two sections in the narrative, and then something was just said, and it relates to parking. Uh, at one point in the narrative, in um, I believe it's section two, uh, it states that there's thirty four parking spaces. Then on later in the narrative, it talks about uh, in section three D states, there's twenty six spots. So I'm a little concerned on how many spots. And then we talked about in the securing of the loading and unloading that you would be using two spots. So if I use that twenty six, you'd be down to twenty four spots, correct?
Uh, thanks, Nora. So um, the plan was originally submitted with um, with thirty four spots, which um, was contemplated based on a potential expansion of the building that would add an additional five thousand square feet. Um, that expansion is is no longer going forward. So the actual number of parking spots um, on the facility um, is is twenty six. Um, I don't believe that accounts, I believe that is in addition to the um, the the loading area. Um, pursuant to the the zoning, twenty five spots um, are required. Um, so uh, and you know, we don't anticipate any more than twenty or twenty two employees um, at the facility at any time. Uh, so that would be an additional four spots at uh, peak capacity, assuming every single employee drives there. Um, so we we meet the zoning requirement and and feel we have ample parking, but there is a discrepancy between uh, the latest plan submitted, which reflects the the twenty six spots, and that's what it's gonna be um, at the facility and the thirty four spots that were uh, represented in the the materials that we submitted.
All right. So in the narrative, your max of twenty five employees is now going to be somewhere between twenty and twenty two then?
Um, twenty five employees uh, hired at, I I and I guess Ed, you can speak to this, is it twenty five employees total at the facility or uh, you know, twenty five in one shift?
It's twenty two max on site at one time. Given the spread over Saturday and Sunday and needing to cover those days as well, uh, we expect to no more than twenty two, and even honestly, less than that on any given shift, uh, most likely. Twenty two would really be the absolute max with overlap involved. But given weekend days, um, yeah, that's it. We'll give the amount of employees is greater, but given weekend days in the spread, uh, twenty two would be the max we'd expect on any given day or time.
Okay, great. Um, and then I'm gonna just ask ask another question as it relates to waste. I noticed in the narrative that there's use of PPE uh, material, safety material. What's the uh, waste disposable process that you'll have on that?
So the, and I, so I mean, you you have um, you know, you have the the marijuana waste, um, and you um, and the marijuana waste has to be disposed in in accordance with the the commission's regulations. Um, so you know, typically it's segregated from the, you know, you have uh, segregated the waste from the rest of the marijuana um, or the usable marijuana and um, uh, so separated in the area and then um, uh, ultimately uh, it is secured and then put into a a locked dumpster that is then uh, taken away by a um, a a a commissioned approved marijuana waste vendor. Um, so everything is um, uh, you know, regulated at the the state level as it as it uh, relates to um, getting rid of the the marijuana waste. Um, all of the employees that would be handling uh, the the marijuana waste would have to follow, again, um, best practices and 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 state SOPs as they pertain to uh, you know, dealing with these these substances. Uh, that would involve masks, gloves, the the necessary equipment to make sure that uh, everybody um, re- remains safe and and uh, there's, you know, no um, no harm to any any individuals. So um, all um, all uh, all is uh, regulated and and done in accordance with um, the the regulations. Um, but we can certainly, you know, provide uh, more in-depth details to the extent that, you know, you wanna um, you want more information about uh, the, you know, this type of this type of practice with the waste.
No, that's that's, that's good for now. Uh, John, that's all I had right now.
Okay, um, Jeff, do you have any questions?
None whatsoever. I'm familiar with the process.
Okay, we'll leave it at that. Chris Campo?
No, I'm good, thanks. As long as the uh, fire department's fine with the updated site plan as well as the planning board with the fenced in area. That's all I have.
And Chris Sheedy?
Uh, hi, John. Um, I don't have questions per se. It's more comments. Um, I'd like to see or hear some feedback from uh, the police department on security. The presentation was very good. It seems like they have like thought through everything, but um, I'd like to have a comment from the police department and also uh, noise mitigation. Uh, between the generator and um, um, the uh, climate control on the roof, I I think that's a important consideration. And the fire, I'd like to hear a fire uh, opinion on the access road. So I I don't know if we're voting on this tonight. Uh, if we're not, I'd like to like get a little feedback from uh, those uh, two departments.
Yeah, well, the fire department hasn't got back to us yet, and as I I mentioned earlier, um, it it we usually don't vote on on this the first time around. Um, because some of them can go for uh, multiple meetings, but uh, this, these, these folks have seemed to to hit on all of a a lot of the points, uh, as Amy, you know, more so than than some. So um, what I think at this point, it uh, may make sense to do, um, and I'll I'll ask for public comment in a second, and if maybe has any any additional comments, is it seems like uh, you know, first and foremost, um, to get the planning board and and more specifically, the fire chief's um, opinion on the updated and revised plans. Um, there have been some comments, questions, requests, I guess, hope you wanna word it in regards to potential, you know, how how much flexibility they're out of the hours of operation and and some noise mitigation for some of the mechanicals and screening and whatnot. So um, you know, I'm hoping the applicant can can go back and and reassess if there's any whittle room on on any of those those topics, uh, of those issues. As far as the police department goes, uh, like I had mentioned a little earlier, Chris, um, you know, I I think maybe the best course of action is potentially just to get a comment from the police chief. Um, as far as, you know, they they're in compliance with the CCC's um, regulations and guidelines, and that is comfortable or something along those lines.
Okay.
For a lot of reasons, I don't think we want to have too much of a detailed conversation about their their security plans. Um, we don't want to give anybody a a map to anything. So um, other than that, Amy, um, did I miss anything? Or is is do you want to kind of recap what we need to make sure we have for the next meeting and 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 then I'll I'll open it to see if there's anyone else on who has public comment, and then we can figure out where to go from there.
Sure. So um, so other than um, what you said, although I might repeat some things, I'm sorry. Um, we want to get the approval from the fire department on that gravel road. Um, we want to look into reducing deliveries on um, weekends, if that could be possible. Um, we wanted to look into um, any noise and things with the chillers on the rooftop units, although I think that your explanation of that might be sufficient. Um, you wanted to update your narrative regarding no coke, no um, composting outside. Um, the backup generator, we wanted, we wanted to see that on the plan. We wanted to make sure um, that we knew the size of it and that it's not on the residential side. So we want to know the sighting of it, where it will be. Um, the the parking, you might just need to update your narrative on the parking spots um, and the twenty two um, maximum employees. And then um, that was it that I have. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lake Kim, uh, is there anyone on Facebook who has posted or has a question or comment?
Nobody on Facebook.
And I do not believe there's anyone on this call who's raised their hand or is looking to comment. Correct? Base uh, Lake Kim, I just want to make sure I didn't miss that. There's no one who's looking to make comments.
Yeah, no, nobody on Facebook.
Or or on our call here.
Or on our call, no.
Or on our call, no.
So let me, um, let me, I think, you know, obviously we need to get a few more questions or answered and, and some points clarified. Uh, I guess my question is to you, Brandon, is there any, any clarification you need from, from the board or from council as far as to what we're, we're looking for? And, you know, I'm hoping we can get everything answered and wrapped up and we can move forward with this at, at our next meeting if, um, we can get everything.
I, I, I think that town council summation of the outstanding information was, um, was fantastic. I, I took notes. Um, and I think that we can easily get, um, all of these items, uh, and then, um, resubmit to the board, uh, and, um, have a additional discussion. Um, but I, I'm, I'm set. I, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Chris Carmichael?
Yes, if I could add to Amy's comments, can we get a, um, an impact statement from police and conservation, just a brief summary that she's okay with the road? Um, I know they're going to go through an order of conditions with them. We can put that in the special permit, um, that it, it complies, but just to make sure that it, it's a road that has to be designed by conservation and, and fire. So I'd, I'd like a statement saying that they're both okay with it. That's all.
Any other questions or comments from, uh, anyone on the board? Okay, so at this point, um, I'm assuming, Amy, we want a motion to continue the hearing until March, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is anyone willing to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we continue to the next hearing, scheduled meeting of the ZBA, um, and so we can gather the, uh, requested information.
And that date is what, Kathy, March? I can't hear you.
March eighteenth.
Okay, so it's continued to March eighteenth. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, we're going to do the roll call. Nora?
Yay.
Jerry?
Good.
Jeff?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yay.
And I vote in favor as well. So it's unanimous. The meeting is continued or the hearing is continued to our March meeting. Um, and we, uh, look forward to seeing, uh, you folks back at that point. Have a good night.
Likewise. Have a good night, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's wrap this up quick. I think we've been on long enough unless anyone wants to disagree with what we've become assuming is no. So we have, uh, meeting minutes to approve for the January nineteenth meeting, which were included in, uh, one of the email packets we received. Um, Amy, you're leaving?
I, I think I'm all set, right?
You're all set.
Can I ask a question?
Unless you want to. Let's manage the question the right way. Actually, Chris has a question for you, Amy.
Yes, Chris.
Did we need to get a continuance, a agreement for a continuance from the applicant?
No, this is a special permit, so the ninety days starts at the close of the hearing. So we are good. So I will see you guys on March eighteenth.
Thank you very much, Amy.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Miss, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting from January nineteenth.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, Jeff seconded. Uh, all in favor, roll call. Nora?
Yay.
Chris Campo?
Yay.
Jeff Youngquist?
Yay.
Gary Knoll?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yay.
Chris Sheedy? And I am voting in favor as well. So the motion carries, minutes approved. Any old business to come before the board this evening? Any new business? I'm not even going to give you a chance to say there is some. So, that being said, let's make a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Chris Carmichael, second?
Second.
Jeff Youngquist? All right, last roll call, all in favor. Nora?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Chris Campo?
Yes.
Jeff Youngquist?
Yes.
Chris Sheedy? Jerry?
Yes.
And I am in favor as well. I don't have a gavel, but I'll hit my desk and meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Take care. We'll see you.